Ready? Okay, we'll call the March eighth, two thousand twenty-three Barnes County Art School Board meeting to order. And you had one addition on the agenda?
Uh, yep, letter of retirement slash resignation.
New business.
E.
Anything else?
That's it.
We need a motion then to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that is approved. Move the consent agenda, which covers our minutes, bills, and financial reports.
Correction to the minutes, last time on the second motion, it says come seconded by Jennifer Elston. I think I actually did it, she did the one before that, so.
I was not catching that.
I was reading, I'm like, that's a new person.
Where was it?
Um, it's the second motion, I think, for the financials, somebody else, she did the second one. I can look it up again.
I'll look for it.
Uh, I think I got it.
So you said Cindy.
Yeah.
I think, you read right past.
It was the third paragraph, questions regarding financial reports at the end, it says Sidney Christensen, Jennifer Elston. It should be Jennifer Bollingberg. I giggled. I ran right over it, so, hey.
Do you have any other?
There is, that's why I was like. It's true.
Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? I would then leave a question. Anybody? If not, then we need a motion to approve that consent agenda.
I'll note, Jennifer will motion.
I'll second.
Bollingberg, B O L.
Roll call then.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
And Cindy's coming through the door.
Patron form, you have?
Nothing. Nope.
And then the reports?
Uh, just a couple of things addition on, for mine, uh, would be just legislative stuff, just kind of started again, but HB twelve thirty-eight, which is that ending fund balance one, uh, pushing that back to twenty twenty-seven, uh, passed the senate today. So it's basically passed both chambers, so we should. Shouldn't have to, nope, uh, for that, so that hopefully should be a done deal for a few more years, which will help us. And then just, uh, Michelle, whoever it is, thanks for setting up that meal for PT conferences for that. Otherwise, um, Mrs. Bits and principals probably have more important stuff and neat stuff to talk about than I do, so.
Secondary, JR. Not here. Don't do Mrs. Bitsy, elementary.
I don't have anything to add, except that I'm still updating conference totals. Miss Bits will probably add about her elementary today, so.
Any questions? Technology, Mrs. Bits, you have anything?
Um, the only thing that I have, other than still working on class link implementation, is the legislative showcase update that our kids attended at the Capitol in Bismarck today. So last month, I put a proposal into Edutek for our students to present out there, and then they entered proposals and took ten schools. So these are our kids, um, with our representatives today. Um, and I'll just show you the, what they did is, um, they did, they used a program called Co-Spaces and the merge cube that you see on there, and they built their own augmented reality environment using Co-Spaces. And then, um, they showed that project using the QR codes, the, the iPad and the codes on that cube to interact with there. They, they all did something different, so they all had a different topic. We had like Jacob Bollingberg that did, um, crop rotation, crop rotation, I was thinking erosion, you have talked about erosion. And we had another student do, um, the parts of a steam engine train, and we had like Hampton do parts of the book and.
Horse and motion.
Gravity and friction from another student, so there was a very wide variety of, um, topics that they did to explain that through that technology integration piece. So, um, I did put some photos together, I threw them into an iMovie, but, um, so here's just a quick, a quick little snippet of some of the pictures that I'll show you. Uh, they also got the opportunity to sit in on the floor at the, the Capitol today. If you're watching the recording at home, this will be out on our YouTube channel at some point, so don't feel bad if you can't see it on the recording. So they presented, they had a two-hour timeframe where legislators came through, and they presented their project to the legislators. I feel like I should have some rock and music too. I just did this, I just did this on the fly, just so you could see.
And I, I'll speak and just thank Mrs. Ammon for, I mean, this all happened within the last four weeks, but not only Mrs. Ammon for extending the learning into this, but the other teachers, they.
We'll skip past this little interview, they've got a TV interview too, but we'll just skip past with the.
They stepped in and they took recesses so she could work with them, and they stepped in and helped cover things so that they had the time and the planning to make it work. And then our chaperones that went with, because we had boys, a lot more boys than girls, so we had a couple dads go, Cody and Grant. And so it really was a team effort, and we appreciate them all because they had a great experience, so.
This is the, um, I'll skip out of here, just so you can see, they were interviewed. So I will play that for you. I think I'm in the right spot. Most days legislators in the session go through tedious work drafting baby bills, but today, they got to take time to learn through videos what North Dakota students were doing in the classroom. Bella Craft has more.
It's not every day you see video games and robots trying to send the work done during the legislative session at the North Dakota Capitol. Things such as coding and virtual reality weren't around when these lawmakers were in school, but now they're in oral lessons.
Even when I started teaching technology and incorporating technology into the classroom wasn't very big, and it grew and it kept growing. And now we just integrate technology in every part of our education.
Ten schools from across the state presented how technology is used in their classrooms, from robotic Legos to digital sites. The different ways to learn seem limitless.
I'm not turning down books, books are still good, but I think it's just, we can have way more wide variety on, online shop.
Project where you build it on an app.
Barnes County North fifth graders had a chance to present their merge cubes. The cubes displayed their book reports through AR.
It reads a QR code that's on the cube, and we take our iPads and it's on the app and we show it on the cube.
The showcase not only taught legislators about how technology is now integrated in schools, but it helps students practice their presentation skills and share their passion for technology.
Teaches you different things and how to overcome different problems, that's one of my favorite parts.
The showcase was funded through Edutek, which helps provide education technology development for K three twelve in the state. In Bismarck, I'm Bella Craft, reporting for your newsletter.
Yeah, so, that is my update, it was super rewarding to watch these kids today. Can't even explain like the experience they had, and Cody was with us today, so if he wants to add anything as being as a parent.
It was impressive, that's not what I was expecting, but to see them interacting, explaining, it was, it was cool, really was.
And I don't know if Grant said anything about his.
I was getting Snapchat updates all day, so every time I would come, I'd be like, excuse me, and then, um, like, when the video came across of them standing on the legislative floor amongst, and being a part of that process, like the connection to where we spend the money here, but it comes from there and it all comes full circle, it's just, it was pretty cool, I thought, so. It is fabulous.
It's all great. Thank you. Okay, we have any committee report?
No committee reports, but since we have a big gap now between board meetings, there'll be probably three, four different committees meeting within this time. So, couple of them will set up tonight after this one, but other ones kind of be looking for emails, because we'll try to get through at least, uh, finance, policy, curriculum, and probably buildings grounds and transportation in the next month.
Well, on pace, the negotiations are a notice of recognition. You have all the paperwork there.
Hmm, that's the motion that needs to, somebody to read.
He's the closest.
Need a motion there, okay. Who wants to make the motion? You got, you got the paperwork ready there, right?
The paperwork's in your thing to sign.
What's in here?
Yep, so, so.
Everything else has been like a page.
So the teachers' sign that was sent out, it's been posted, and then the, after it's approved, there's paperwork for Mike to sign.
We've got the paperwork, so we need a motion to.
So I motion pursuant to North Dakota Century Code fifteen point one dash sixteen dash eleven, parentheses one, parentheses C. The Board of the Barnes County North School District recognizes the Barnes County North Education Association as the representative organization for the negotiation unit for a minimum of one year beginning March eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Roll call then.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes. And next is the calendar.
I've got, let me just pass that down. Uh, on the one that was sent to you in the.
Or packet one?
Packet, yes, it didn't have the total number of student contact days and the hours, uh, on that, and then this total contract days, so. Otherwise, the calendar itself, nothing changed, just at the bottom, as far as the number of days, uh, student contact days, number of days in each nine weeks and trimesters, uh, we just updated that to reflect those. So it aligns better with, uh, VOTEC and, uh, just kind of upset compromise a little bit from VOTEC, but yet keeping our own VCN stuff due as far as spring break days and stuff like that.
So the only real change was the two PD days that went back to contact days.
And extended those early outs to full days.
Okay.
Yes.
I did.
Yeah.
There was no, there was discussion before of starting school on the twenty-second, so do we have more contact days now by starting school on the sixteenth still?
No.
No, we have.
Yeah, we gained.
Yes, it was one seventy-one student contact days prior, and now it's one seventy-one.
One seventy-three, and that comes from dropping those two PD days, yeah.
The lot, the other calendar had a start, the start dates is the same.
Start and end dates are the same.
There was discussion at the last meeting of possibly moving that to the.
There was discussion.
Yeah. Which with VOTEC really didn't gain anything with VOTEC as far as any more contact days with them.
We just have days they don't go.
Right, yes.
But they didn't think they would go back.
Conversational points was having that twenty-first PD day possibly moved up to the week prior, but that's already probably scheduled at Valley City.
It's scheduled through SEEK.
Through SEEK.
Yes, that Southeast Ed Consortium, and that's set through five, six, maybe more districts than that.
The discussion that we're gonna have the VOTEC is if they can relook at that date, because there's more schools starting earlier than later.
Okay.
But that'll be for a next year conversation, you know.
Girl.
And the professional development days, are they part of the negotiated agreement?
They're part of the contract days for the negotiated agreement. We need one eighty-two, and that's what this bottom corner reflects. Contracts reflect one hundred eighty-two days.
But there, there's no set number of professional development days that have to be allowed.
Three is what's, uh, by Century Code, and we have an extra one, but three is set by Century Code. The first three are dictated by Century Code. Correct me if I'm wrong, is that correct, right?
Yes, PD days are set, you have to have a certain number of days, hours of PD.
And they switch to hours to give districts the flexibility to have more PD instead of days.
Correct.
Right.
Right, yeah, for that.
To answer, we need at least three, by Century Code. Any other discussion or motions on the calendar?
That just seems like a really early start, I mean, just, I don't know if it's the way the month falls or what, but the sixteenth of August is really, I'm not a big fan of starting school early.
That was part that you guys went back to look, correct? And your recommendation is?
This one. What options are there to not start school early, none?
It's, it's been talked about, and when we ask, a majority of the teachers, as they would prefer that in, in the semester before Christmas break. And last time, we did calendar, you know, and it cuts days out, and then there was a discrepancy in semester one having less days, I don't know if you guys remember that, and semester two having more days, so that pushed that date up a little bit more.
Well, this, ending the semester at Christmas, that makes it important.
Yeah.
Makes total sense.
And so it was to even out the semester days, because that was.
Because then if you move that up, then you shorten that one semester by even five more days, or you would.
You're basically equaling out between.
Trying to, yes.
And that was an issue a couple of years ago.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so, um, that is where it came about from before, I mean.
Well, I mean, the sixteenth is a pretty early dismissal date too.
And that's because we want to have graduations prior to.
Memorial weekend.
The week before, yeah.
It just seems the way the months usually lay, it's usually the twentieth to the twentieth, something like that, and the sixteenth just seems, I look at it from the farm side of things, like, boy, that sucks, that schools start in the sixteenth, I'm like, we're gonna be in the heat of everything right then, that's usually the twentieth, things have calmed down a little bit.
And that's where we got a look, like I said last time, a little bit, as we're co-op-ing too, we're, we're co-op-ing with athletics there, and they're, they're not meshing that total well in the start of the year either.
It started on the exact same calendar day, except if.
Twenty-third, I believe, twenty-second or twenty-third.
Started the seventeenth, which was a Wednesday in the middle of that week.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
It's, it's always gonna be that day, it's just where it falls on the morning.
Yeah, I agree.
Graduations, JR, did you talk with kids of anything this year, and were other years with parents and kids on about a date for graduation? They have any concerns with that? Other years they have, you know, in the past, so that's what's.
For the day that it fell off?
Mm-hmm.
No, the only one that ever comes up is making sure that it doesn't fall on the.
Well, some have been both ways, if some like it on Memorial, some not.
I've never heard anybody say that they liked it.
From me, but I, I haven't heard a lot, there hasn't been many that have come to me with an issue on when graduation has fallen.
I've heard kids like the fact that they're able to go to Valley City, it's because they have friends, they're playing sports, but I don't know if they were able to do that prior, because I have not been able to.
No, I, I heard, I've heard a lot on graduation parties and things, not lining up the best, but, I mean, you can always reschedule parties.
Okay. What's a thought on calendar?
Can we make a little?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the revised calendar that we received here.
Second.
I'll second, Jen.
Any other discussion?
Now, I've got one other question for you. Uh, spring break timing, I mean, is that just on our discretion of when we want that to fall in there?
Yes.
It was feedback from teachers. I, I, I mean, that's where we got it from, is that, and I sat in on the calendar meeting under my mentorship hours, and I feel like our teachers wanted something full or opposite, but when, and you can ask them, because they're here, some of them, but, um, they wanted more spread out in the spring, longer weekends, than like the extended Christmas break or here, so it was to spread out.
Is that happening kind of as a function of the date of Easter, then? So it's a little farther from Easter, or is that all?
Yes. Yeah, and we've had the discussion, like, it doesn't really matter when we schedule spring break, because we have kids missing for vacations all the time. Um, so, you're not the only one, I was too.
This revised schedule has basically the majority backing of staff, teaching, everyone in the building, then?
Both, yeah, the schedules from, the calendars from the get-go, yes, have been taken to both secondary and elementary staffs and.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
And there, and there are staff who expressed some, you know, the same opinion, starting earlier, and there's some who have fought the other way, and so, yeah, it was a majority feedback.
Any other discussion?
Do you ask for parent input on that as well, or no?
No, we have not, or I never have in the past when I put together a calendar.
Um.
It's hard enough to get even close to consensus with staff and whatever else, I mean, to throw in parents, yeah, I mean.
I guess that's where I was coming from, the only one that parent input would probably be for me would be graduation.
And, and staff that have kids in both elementary and high school do mention certain things about ending semester or doing this, and they provide feedback based on being here, but.
Do it bizarre, our spring break doesn't coordinate with Valley City at all, as far as VOTEC and MoD does at all?
No, their spring break evolves around, uh, I think one of the days evolves around like the Class A basketball tournament.
VOTEC will kind of rotate back and forth from boys' basketball tournament, B and A, I mean, that's kind of what they rotate back and forth, kind of appease both sides.
My understanding is once this, if, whether it's a first reading or second reading, I don't know how you've done it in the past, but even after the first one, then I will send this to Derek, uh, and then once he has all of ours in there, he will then kind of work his, even though he's got a preliminary out, he'll work it around the other four districts.
We try to send the preliminary, trying to see if everybody can come together on it, and then we work from there.
Right.
So Valley City's vote, spring break this year is March seventeenth.
Which is a makeup day.
Because Easter's later.
So they don't even have that off.
Okay, yeah, I listed here.
Which is, is that this Friday?
Yes.
Which is Class A basketball, yeah, or next.
Next Friday.
Would we, I mean, this makes sense, I guess, with you factoring in when Easter falls on the calendar, so you don't have two weekends in a row with the long weekend or whatever, but, again, I, that gets pretty late for spring break, I mean.
It, it does, and so we're taking the feedback of having more long weekends than one bigger weekend, and then what happens, we have a three-day weekend built in the calendar this year, and we had a ton of teachers take off either the day before or the day we're coming back, so then we're having that issue too, so it's, we don't want to, I mean, I get what you're saying, you know, to plan it all at once, but it's.
And ideally, it would be great if we scheduled a spring break in March and everybody took their vacation on that weekend, but, I mean, that's just not reality, and that's not the way it works. I mean, people go and it works in their schedules, I mean, and that's just the way it is, I mean, staff do it too, for that, um.
It's hard to come back after kids are out for a long period of time and transition them back in, where if it's a longer weekend, it's easier to get back into the groove of thing and the learning, for elementary kids, I can't speak for high school, but.
Any other questions or discussion? Not, we have a motion to approve the calendar.
We already committed a motion.
Yeah, I said we have that, so.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes. Superintendent's evaluation, next on there.
He's got one reading or two.
Well, we talked about it, what you said last time, it's a pile, let's get your scores together, and then we would go through these individuals individually to look at. So the first set is goal and vision setting. After looking at that, we have to make a decision if they're satisfactory or unsatisfactory, or comments too, or Mr. Curry, if you have something to respond back, this would be a good time to do that, so.
Topic by topic, you said?
We got it, yep, that's all you said, to bring it back, we're gonna go topic by topic to do satisfactory, unsatisfactory, so. Number one is goal and vision setting.
Can we put that on the board?
I don't know what's on the board, here, here, here's a comment. Look, that's, we gotta sign it.
I, I can look through it.
Here's another one I want to look, because these are the ones we need to sign at the end, somebody else wants to.
I got it, I got it. Yes, I kept looking for Lindsey. Got it.
Okay.
Just. Just initial comment, uh, pretty much about the whole thing, I'll be, I didn't look a lot at the rank, the numbers. Uh, I looked a lot at the comments, and I was very pleased to see a lot of comments, so thank you for those, those mean, those help me a lot more than any rating does. Uh, for that, uh, whether they're suggestions or, you know, can we do this, or even just comments, it helps me to then take those apart and put them into different categories of prioritization, and, you know, actually, you'll react and act on those, so thank you for all the comments in here, however they were put, so it's beneficial for me moving forward.
I can say, we visited before, it's kind of where we were at here.
I found the numeric thing, I, you know, like you had talked, Eric, about one to four was the option, and one to ten, or one to five, the numeric thing in general is tough, period, because in one thing, does a seven any different than an eight?
Right.
So I, I think, I agree with you, and I would say the comments probably was more valuable, in my understanding of how to evaluate, than it was putting the number in the box, so.
Yeah, I could tell you probably about every comment in here, but I couldn't tell you about what any of these, what a rating is, because, to be honest, I didn't really look at them.
It can trend, like Eric had talked about, so.
Yes.
Yeah, it's still important, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, first one is vision and goal setting, so you would need a motion to, if it's satisfactory or unsatisfactory.
I would motion to have it satisfactory.
I'll second. Lindsey, roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Second indicator is moderation, any comments there, or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Satisfactory.
Satisfactory.
Ready, Cindy? When you're ready, Lindsey, it's roll call.
That was Brett, right?
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Number three, human resource management, comments or hooking?
I'd like to just make, I had a hard time with this, because I don't really, as not being in the building, it's hard to really see the interaction, the superintendent with the staff that he's required to be overseeing, so this one, I think, was really hard to even guesstimate on where to put that, so I anticipate to really evaluate this, I would look next fall to try to be more cognizant of how those evaluations went at the staff you're responsible for and so forth. I think the, your rapport with people, as you see it at functions or within the building or. I think the, your rapport with people as you see it at functions or within the building or walking through parent-teacher conferences obviously seems positive, so I went with that direction. But to see how the actual administrative requirement of the position, I would say that was hard, and a numeric thing was really tough that side, so that'd be my only comment is how do we better evaluate that in more of a data-based and understanding factual way, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think Mike and I talked a little bit about this one, uh, as well with evaluations and with, you know. Things like that and how to, how to get that out to the board without, I mean, not taking every evaluation to a board meeting or stuff like that, so that's something, yes, that we'll look at moving forward and. How we can do that to kind of give you guys a better idea of what's happening or, yeah.
Anything else there or are we giving a motion for that area?
I'll make a motion to.
Satisfactory. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
When you're ready, Lindsey, roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Fourth one is curriculum and student support services area. Comments or questions? Do we need a motion to approve, is it satisfactory?
I'll second.
Lee and Brett?
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Fifth area is community relations.
I'll make a motion that it's satisfactory.
Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Cindy? Roll call, when you're ready.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Last one, number six, is operations and resource management area.
I have a comment on that, that was the one spot I think I seen the most correlation to the comments from everybody. I mean, every, there was a lot of comments on there as to having like a long-term.
Long-range.
Budget, to kind of know where we're at.
Yep.
And that would be something to say, and that was a comment that I've had and I noticed a bunch of those other comments said something, maybe put some priority on being that that came up so many different times.
There's a comment.
And that's built into, I think, some of the stuff we talked about in strategic plan that we asked of and we just.
Correct.
That's what I, Mr. Curry, Mr. Curry and I talked about, the, the common threads were that and we really got to work more on the strategic plan.
Well, and especially since we might have got a slight reprieve from legislative with to kick that part down, so we still need to be very proactive and we don't have a slush on to deal with, so.
Right. Yeah, and, and there was even throughout this, uh, evaluation, there was always comments of, you know. Going back to, well, what's said in our strategic plan, relating things back to our strategic plan. And that's where I think the long-range, uh, financial and the long-range facilities are two of them that are. Or need to be part of that strategic plan, that aren't there yet, that, yes, we have to work on getting in there.
Well, and how to put the long-range plan together with the constant legislatural changes in funding and balances every so many years, you know. At least if we had a number to work with consistently, so. I'll make a motion to write that satisfactory.
I'll second.
When you're ready, Lindsey, roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike. Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
And I want to thank you guys, getting, like you say, comments are the biggest thing and that's what we've been pushing the last few years, at least get some comments out there. And I like this that we do have some, like, Mr. Curry and I talked, that scoring thing wasn't a lot about what we visited about, just some of the comments.
Yep.
Okay, I'll need that back here for, if we, him and I got to sign that. Okay, return to learning plan, you just need to look at some date changes, correct?
Uh, I did, do you want a copy of it? It's on our website, uh, as long as we get S R funds, we have to update it every six months. Uh, we did not change a word in it, remember last year in August, we went from about a ten, twelve-page document to a one and a half-page document. Nothing has changed, all we're going to do is the, update a date on the back to March eighth and move on, so. I guess if you want to see it, I've got a copier, but, uh, it's more of a formality in, in my opinion than anything. Yes.
So we would need a motion to approve, or to just to update our plan?
Make a motion to update the return to learning plan.
Any other discussion there, if not, roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Do we have the unpaid leave request?
Was it in the packet?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh.
It was actually approved.
It was actually two days ago, but in my conversation with the teacher, uh, if it's not approved, I just told her that. If it doesn't get approved, you have to use up your remaining, uh, personal leave time for a sick day, is the conversation I had with her.
Can I ask what the unpaid leave is for?
Appointment.
With that teacher?
An appointment.
Is it medically necessary?
Yep. Based on what is on the.
Is a health condition impeding what she, or sorry, what this person can do?
Based on what is written in the letter?
That's what I kind of was reading.
It was a change because of weather, change the appointment.
The medical reason was necessary for this teacher?
Yes. Yes.
Can I ask?
The only reason I know that is I, I know about what was done.
Right, and I know that surgery process too.
Yeah, so.
Um, can I request that you guys do not approve this unpaid leave request? And I will talk to this teacher to see if she can go a different route, because we do have.
There is a different route.
We do have that sick leave.
Yes, you do.
Bank, and I, I would like her to use that, or sorry, this teacher to use that. Instead of you guys approving it and updating.
So can I ask if that doesn't get approved, then what am I supposed to do for payroll purposes?
Yeah, I know. And I wish that person would have.
Does your sick leave bank require a certain amount of time off? Or can she, can they utilize it for a day here?
They can, uh, they can request up to twenty days.
Yeah.
At a time.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be a certain amount of time at one time, it could be a day if it's medically necessary, a day if it's medically necessary.
Yes.
Okay.
They can request one day.
And they don't have to be out of personal or sick leave to utilize it.
They have to be out of sick, not personal, we don't want to be not touching personal, it's just sick leave, so if they're out of sick leave, they can utilize the teacher.
Is this the typical step then, ones are out of that personal leave to ask for the sick bank?
If it, if it, if it's part of the requirements that they can utilize.
Those guys have, you guys have a group that looks at that.
Yep. So I would read, I would ask if you guys would not accept that unpaid leave and will go a different route.
Can we table?
Yeah, table it till next month and then you guys go down your route or do you need us to reject it?
The question would be, can we adjust payroll if down?
I'll figure it out.
Figure it out.
Well, you should must be done now or you do it later.
Right. Just what you're doing.
For tenants on it.
Okay, is Sarah Fock on it?
No.
I would say table it and then we can, if they rescind it off or we deny it.
Yeah.
Cause I think that's, that'd be better for them function, yeah.
Better look.
I didn't realize that was a thing.
So I would just deny it then.
Like we have a requirement, she had a minimum of ten days that you had to use it.
That teacher's going to be here in the next couple of days, hopefully?
Well, I hope we're all here within the next couple of days, yes, yes.
Well.
We need a motion to table.
So, yeah, and if you need me to cover classrooms, we can talk, let me know.
A motion to table till next week.
It's going to take two minutes.
I'll talk, whoa, whoa, please.
What?
Are we good? I just wanted to make sure everybody was done.
I would, I would just recommend that you go with Mr. Schaefer's, uh, recommendation to deny the request. And then have it run through the sick bank.
Versus.
We're just, we're denied, they can deal how they want to deal with it, yeah.
Versus denying it?
Or I, the only concern we have is would she have, if something happened and it wouldn't work, would she have to bring it back then? What leaves the most option for the?
Can you approve it dependent on approval of the sick leave bank?
Uh, the five people that are part of that board have to approve it.
Right.
I don't think we want to dictate where it's going to go, we're, what's in front of us is to approve or not approve.
I can tell you, I can tell you where I'm going to go with it, but I'm only one of five.
To be eligible for that, we don't have to deny it, do we?
No.
Can we table it?
So why don't we just table it?
Okay, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, and if it gets approved, then it'll just be taken off the agenda.
We just rescind it off the agenda by this time.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So the motion?
Motion and a second is to table it.
Thank you.
Giving you all the things.
Who?
Brett. Michelle.
Okay.
You will list it on there for next week because it's tabled and if it comes, we just take it off, that's all, we will list it. On next month's agenda. It'd just be amended off if we go.
If we have school.
Roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay, business manager evaluation.
Definitely maybe.
You want us to approve the form that was sent out as an option or?
I think you're looking at form, I think you're looking at who's going to do it, I think you're looking at when you want it done by.
Is there any requirement that the board has to do it?
No.
No.
As the body, we can request somebody to do it.
We're going to appoint someone.
Appoint, I mean, that's what I mean, like, rather than have nine members that don't necessarily know everything about what's going on.
No, I think if we do it as a board, we all have to do it.
Okay, that's what I did know, I think a three-person committee and then others, no, it's, okay, that's what I was.
For doing it, it's a, it's a board.
School board.
Okay, got it.
Decision and evaluation.
Got it.
Or designate it to the superintendent.
Can we invite others to do it too?
That is a board-appointed position, correct?
It is a board.
So I feel that the board should do the evaluation, in my opinion.
I would think it's the board.
Right.
And that's what you guys, that's personnel that talked about, because you talked about these evaluations, correct?
Yeah.
I want to think that's a good idea that.
It was a board evaluation.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Has the business manager ever been formally evaluated at B C N before like this?
Years back.
So we have nothing to say.
This, this group here is not done.
Not, well, I've been on the board.
Since I've been here. No, no, it's, I said years back.
Long, long time. So the best.
Only one of us here goes years back.
The evaluation form that was brought forward in the packet was the one the personnel committee reviewed as from North Coast School Board Association, correct?
Yes, and Lindsey has reviewed it and we.
Uh, it's in one, I think.
There's one on, yeah.
It's four, right?
Yeah, I believe so. They're number weird, I, I noticed that after the fact and I'm like, what the heck?
So. Um, now I lost it, I did have it, I looked at.
Then all the one we did here in the back was way shorter than that, it got to be what the board sees more than likely, you know.
Yeah, because it's four pages of like actual evaluation with like a cover page and the attachment just explaining their template, kind of.
A lot of the time, I have no idea. I'm assuming she's disseminating the payroll or we have teachers on us, you know.
But I say, did you guys just, did you look at this and take any things out, did you just take a template?
We took a few things out because there were some things that I don't do. Because there was some things that even School Boards Association had in brackets and kind of indicated that someone else might do those duties and most of those were removed, so.
Well, if you don't do them, you end up poor rated.
Yeah, and maybe change, you know, some wording.
She's never done wrong, because I talked to one little about it and it's.
She's never done a wrong.
Some things are maybe above what we're doing now, so I don't know.
Some of these things are.
Couple in there, yes.
Well, we got to start somewhere, so I move just use the packet as provided to do the business manager evaluation this year.
And when would you like it done by?
Timeline would be, who, okay, wait.
First, okay, let's, okay.
Who does it go to, to summarize, do you get this again? So what's your timeline? Um, April first. To President Mike's where, before I get done.
Is that like, just before tax day?
I will do what I need to do. There's still going to be snow on the ground, so you won't, what?
By the whole board?
Yes.
Yes, it's going to be whole board, yeah. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Evaluation form by April first, so we would look to approve it at our next board, right, go through the same process?
Yeah, because we're going to be sitting on this for a while, right?
Okay.
So just looking at the, how are these, is it just pass fail then or?
There's three, uh, three on the bottom.
You see it, there's comments and needs improvement, satisfaction, seeds expectations.
So no numeric stuff?
No. That's what we got. Motion and a second, roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will we get a fresh one that doesn't have sample across it?
Yeah.
We'll send you a fresh one.
Can you send it in, like type in it format?
Yeah, I'll send it in both formats so everyone can open it, hopefully.
Okay, I'll collect them again.
These won't have to be averages of numbers at least, so.
That's the easy part. Average of the numbers is the easy part, ask Mr. Schaefer, we can do month numbers. Okay, Miss Lynn, family connection.
No, no.
President Coke, yep, I, I had it written there and it went back. Okay, letter of retirement, who has that? Oh, here, I'll give it to.
I was thinking about it.
Okay. Dear Barnes County North administrators and school board members. After forty-four years of working in various capacities within the Barnes County North School District and all former schools. I'm writing this letter to announce my formal retirement effective at the end of the twenty twenty-three school year. I never would have thought that when I first started teaching in Wimbledon in nineteen seventy-nine, I would spend my career in this district and get to be part of all the changes that have happened over the years. This job and library I've worked so hard to build, especially over the last ten years in this building, mean a lot to me. Throughout my many years with the district, I have been blessed to work with so many great staff members and students that will miss seeing them every day. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to work with such a great district. This decision did not come easily for me, but I have decided that it's time to retire from my full-time position and possibly look for something part-time with a little more flexibility. So that I can spend more time with family and possibly do some traveling in the winter months. I look forward to the opportunity to provide support and guidance to whoever the district hires to replace me. Sincerely, Elizabeth Undel.
Well, she was temping in one of my classrooms when she first started. I'll make the.
You'll make the motion, yep.
I will second that.
It goes back to.
Is that you? Is that you?
Motion and second to approve with regret, wish her well, and thanks for many years of service. Lindsey, you've got a roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Now you can.
Yeah, family connection, you will have them. Her and Tech, we meet tomorrow. Shine Valley Special Ed.
We met today, uh, I guess the biggest thing from the meeting is going into next year, we will have, we ha, will have or currently have eight openings to fill within the unit. Luckily, nothing, nothing here in B C N, but I think five special ed teachers, two paras and a speech pathologist. I believe, uh, for that, the good thing is financially, it's looking pretty good as of right now, when we went through that today, so we're not expecting any, anything like we did last year as far as.
No big surprise.
No, no, we're not, unless something major were to happen in the next month. For that and, uh, so Tracy in her last few months is still grinding to try to get these filled and look for people and, uh, hopefully get Andrea in May and June and transition her in before Tracy goes, so, but biggest thing is gonna be staffing.
Okay. All right. For our next meeting, April eighteenth, nineteenth, get back. Somewhere in that first part of April then, we'll have, we'll have the business manager evaluation out. Okay, and return.